Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
We do. We actually have, let's see, eight, nine people registered and we received no public comment via email. So if we could begin with Ann Miller.
Let me go ahead and read my statement first.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay.
I apologize, jumping ahead of the gun.
Okay. Usually it's me making the mistake, so it's nice.
Nice to.
Right, exactly. Thank you. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and to hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. Thank you.
And first up is Ann Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Jeff, council members and city officials. My name is Ann Miller from East Gate subdivision for 10 Grant Road. I'm a victim of raw sewage flooding from June 25 and 26. Almost one month later, we have heard no acceptable offers to resolve the negligence and recurring contamination from the city. We are looking for short-term financial compensation now and a long-term solution in the next year to get the CSO in front of our homes fixed. I'm grateful to be here to speak to you tonight. We do not compare ourselves to true disaster victims. We are alive and we are safe. We know what is truly important. However, we are victims of neglect by the city of Bloomington and our CSO issues should have been remedied years and years ago. I can assure you that it does not take eight feet of water to cause detrimental flood damage. When sewage is spewing from toilets and showers and sinks then recedes and it returns with more force a second time, it is more than enough to cause thousands of dollars of damage, illness and heartbreak. It should have never entered our homes. If you have not experienced sewage which has permeated carpeting for days, be thankful and by all means be thankful it isn't your home. It's set in clothing, ruined books, home videos, treasured irreplaceable letters and more. Raw sewage is vicious. It is the most sickly odor. It does not leave in a day or two. We are living in our homes with our families in this terrible mess that could have been prevented. This is not an outdoor cleanup with a group of volunteers. We have been cleaning our home for over three weeks now and there is not a finish line in sight. Rebuilding is another story altogether. Financial losses continue rising for each of us. That's a given. We are concerned about our home values, but there is no value placed on peace of mind and the comfort of home, on the love of our community and our neighbors. Our home represents love and laughter and calm because we have worked to make it that way for our family. It doesn't just happen. This might seem off point, but I hope you understand a little of what we have really lost, what our home means to us, and it isn't our first flood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. Next.
Next up, we have Gary Donahue.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Jeff, for helping us. We have a couple of new advocates in the city council, the city departments that we met on Saturday at the McLean County meetings. Alex Rosas, tremendous help. And just recently, Tony Brown, who's the administrator of the overhead street grant program, which I'm encouraging everybody to look into, because Tony's a really stand-up guy and the IT department of the city of Bloomington did get their act together, so I was able to file this all online. And he, it got through to him and it worked. So we're able to thank the city for at least helping us get a place to start. So on behalf of these 40 homes, I'm gonna give the rest of my time to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Who's next?
Next up, we have Robert Sampson.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Bob Sampson and I live at 403 Grant Road in the East Gate neighborhood, just east of Mercer between Washington and Oakland streets. Our home was flooded twice during the storms of June 25th and 26th with storm and sewer water due to the combined sewers that crisscross our area. Today, the city engineering department provided me with a map of the area indicating both combined sewer lines and separate sanitary lines. If you look at this map, and I apologize, I left it at home, but I'm sure you have access to them. If you look at this map, you will see that a good portion of East Gate is marked by red lines indicating combined sewers. In most cases, the few green lines, separate sanitary sewers, sooner or later dump into a CSO line. This is the time bomb that went off on June 25th and June 26th. Today, credible scientists are telling us that abnormal weather patterns are the quote "new normal" unquote. The so-called 500-year and 100-year events no longer have meaning as we begin to see the results of global warming, not in the abstract, but rather the personal in our own neighborhoods, our homes and our lives. Delays in eliminating this CSO problem is a form of gambling. But the stakes are people's homes. I encourage the members of the council to accelerate the CSO replacement schedule and begin full-scale work on East Gate within the next year. I was told today at the engineering department that the next phase only covers Jackson Street east from Mercer, not the larger areas to the north, which are, according to your own maps, crisscrossed with CSOs waiting to back up with the next heavy rain. I am happy for my neighbors on East Jackson Street, one of whom has a $15,000 charge to get their basement cleaned up right now. I am fearful for my neighbors to the north, who, unless the city act soon, will wonder if the next heavy rain will flood their homes. Ladies and gentlemen, the answer to that question is in your hands. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Who's next?
Next up, we have Darlene Weber.
Honorable Mayor and council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Darlene Weber and I live at 2115 East Taylor. We're the last house on the street before it turns into Grant Road. For the last, I was 29 when I moved into my house. I have been vacuuming water seepage and sewage up for the last 52 years. It isn't a recent problem. Every time we got more than four inches of rain, we had seepage and the water would come up the sewer. We don't have a finished basement and you can see why. I called the water department every time we had a four-inch rain. Their story was that when it rained that much, that quickly, the sewage treatment plant couldn't keep up with the rainwater and the sewage. And when I first started calling 52 years ago, there was no runoff field for rainwater. Everything went into the sewage treatment plant. Since then, it's been changed, but not for us. We are still going into the sewage treatment plant. So they said things like, yeah, the East Gate addition has always had problems. They would say if we had a separate sewer for our runoff, this would not have occurred. One year, as I was complaining to the water manager, they came and installed a pump that was to pump the water up to the ground level. It did not help. They put a big hole in my basement floor and it would pump, but the water would come right out from underneath the pump, that metal ring that the pump sits on. So all these years, since the pump was installed, I hear a lot of bang, bang. And it was emptying when there was no rain. It did not help when there is a lot of rain. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Darlene. Who's next?
Next up, we have Stacy DeRocco.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you, Mayor Jeff Crable, council members and city officials. My name is Stacy DeRocco. I live on 305 Grant Road with my children and my husband. I have moved in to East Gate in 2013. Since then, I have been a victim of the city co-mingling sewer with the rain runoff in the East Gate. In 2013, when we moved in, on multiple occasions, my street was so flooded, I could not get my car in and out of. People would have to come pick me up on opposite sides of the street because my whole front was filled with a lake, all the way up to my knees. And again, it like echoes of the others, this was not just one time. We would get seepage in our basement and water. Finally, in 2015, my basement completely flooded. We lost everything that was down there, all my kids' toys, memories and important items. At that time, my husband and I decided to try to do what we could about it. I had sent pictures into the city and had really heard nothing back. We decided to clear out our savings and we invested $20,000 into a new check valve and a complete dewatering system, which has helped. But again, this was $20,000, which was over half my salary as a teacher. Our, since we've done the dewatering system, it has helped nights of the four inches rain, we stray dry, which is great. But on June 25th, it was too much water. The streets flooded so bad, I was afraid it was gonna come up to the front part of my house. My basement was dry, but it was coming all the way up to the front yard and getting kind of scary that it was gonna come into our living area. A truck got stuck in the lake that I'm talking about in my front yard and my, the person inside was asking my husband to help try to clear the water. He cleared it with a rake over the sewer drain that was clogged and bubbling up. At that time, my daughter screamed that the water started flooding in because it had nowhere to go. So the dewatering system couldn't keep up with that much rain. The car was free, but our basement was not, unfortunately. It's been almost a month later and we do have heard no acceptable offers to resolve this issue from the city of Bloomington. We need a solution to get to the answer to this problem. This past weekend, I went on vacation and I had to call my neighbor several times because I was anxious and nervous that my basement was gonna flood again. Luckily, my neighbors had a key to my home and was able to check on it and give me peace of mind. But I am still super nervous for my future and need this figured out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Who's next?
Next up, we have Connie Bosnos.
Hello, my name is Connie Bosnos. Excuse me, I came unprepared tonight, so thank you, council members and mayor for having me here speak today. I too am a resident of East Gate and a new member. I have not even been in my home a year, so some of these stories are a little bit scary to hear. This has been happening for 50 years in some cases. So as, as you all know, with the floods on June 25th and 26th, our fully furnished basement flooded, water up through the drain, the toilet, the shower drain as well. As a previous speaker mentioned, we just got our water remediation bill and it is going to cost $15,000 to pay for the water restoration, which again, as a teacher, is a lot, a big portion of my salary. The claims adjuster for our insurance said our assessed damage was about $27,000 worth of damage. So you put those two together and that's a pretty hefty number. So I'm here just to speak to my damage and to hopefully ask the city to take care of this problem of separating out the lines so that this no longer occurs. I feel bad that this has been happening to these people for so long. Hopefully, this is a one-time occurrence for myself, but that is in your hands. So I will let someone else take the rest of my time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Connie. Who's next?
Next up, we have Kathy Petty.
Good evening. I spoke to you last week, so you've heard my part about my basement flooding twice with sewer water coming up through the sink next to my washer dryer in the basement. Like everybody else, I've had plenty of damages. But tonight, I just want to say that I hope that the members of this council have spent some time this past week considering our situation. And I realize it's not just East Gate. There are a lot of problems throughout the city of Bloomington and they all need to be taken care of. This should be a high priority for the council, I believe. I realize that you have lots of issues in the city of Bloomington to address and to take care of. But this is a human issue. This is a health issue. This is a quality of life issue. This is a very important issue for the city as a whole. You don't want the city to become known as a city that floods and doesn't take care of their people because it gets pushed on the back burner every time somebody new gets elected. It just doesn't seem to be addressed. And it's been going on for a long time. Please, at least consider a short-term solution to our problem. If there's anything, cleaning sewers more frequently, anything that could be done, we would be grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy.
Next up, we have Judy Davenport. And then the last one to follow will be Kurt Hudson.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Crable and city council, thank you for listening. I was in ER for five hours Friday night with a sick relative and came home to the flood. So it's been quite a handful to manage. We lost lots of things. We lost our air conditioner because the furnace went. We lost the hot water heater, so we had no hot water for five days, no air conditioning for four and a half. I won't talk about the memories. That doesn't mean anything to you all, but it does to me. When I retired from teaching and moved back to Bloomington, I picked the East Gate neighborhood because it was so beautiful, because I wanted to be basically on one floor so I could not deal with steps. For the last three weeks, I have been up and down those steps more than I have in the last seven years. Photos were lost, cabinets were lost. I'm an art teacher. My artwork is gone. Thank goodness I had family members to help carry this stuff out. I'm very grateful for what was arranged Saturday because I was put in contact with people who could kind of help. The Baptists, I call them the Baptist Boys, they're gonna come next week, starting Monday. I called and talked to them because they're gonna come and take off my sheet rock, my baseboards and things like that. They will put them up at the curb, but city pickup has stopped picking up bulk. I've gotten two loads out, but obviously, there's more that's gonna come in our neighborhoods as recycle, as people are refurbishing. At this point, I have a real question in my mind as to whether to put sheet rock back in my basement. Three-quarters of it was full. My husband trades on the market. His computers were down there. Fortunately, they were high enough. Unfortunately, it tripped the ground fault on the sump pump and I flooded anyway. The pump was running. The second day, the flood was much smaller. In the long term, what you do for this neighborhood indicates your love and concern for the people that are making it such a beautiful place to live. I have sincere hope that it doesn't wait to 2029 because I don't know if I can live that long.
Okay, thank you, Judy. And Kurt is next.
Mayor, council, thanks for your time today. My name is Kurt Hudson. I live at 303 Grant Road in the East Gate subdivision. And you've just heard a ton of public comment over the last week about the emotional, financial, health and safety, physical toll that the storm has taken on our neighborhood. I'm not here to talk about the 25th and the 26th right now. I'm here to talk about tonight. My understanding is tonight's kind of a working session for the council where we get to maybe hear you kick around some ideas and some thoughts. And my understanding is that you're gonna hear a report out on kind of the city's response to the storm. And I would encourage you to take time and address these concerns you've heard from your residents in East Gate. We'd really appreciate hearing your position on what we are talking about, your position as a council on our formal request to accelerate the separation of the sewers in our neighborhood and those neighborhoods in this city of critical need. We would also appreciate hearing your best thinking on what can be done on our behalf to accelerate the timeline because 2029 just does not work anymore. We've heard for over a decade now that there is a plan to separate the sewers in our neighborhood. Yet again, we're hearing that this may not be done until 2029. Again, I encourage you to use your time today. Please carve out some of it to talk about what you've heard from the residents in our neighborhood and what we can expect from you as a council moving forward to possibly accelerate the timeline to separate the sewers in East Gate and those communities of critical need. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. So that concludes our portion of public comment. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I will make that motion to approve the consent.
Motion by council member Bowlin. Second, okay, second by council member Montney. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Montney.
Yes.
Councilmember Eming.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Hi.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The item passes or a non-ace to announce. Next item on the agenda is our regular agenda, item 5A, presentation and discussion of topics related to the recent storm events as requested by the Public Works Department and the administration. I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and to the community. This was gonna be our first opportunity, shared this last week, that this would be a presentation, not to deep dive into some of the topics that have been raised tonight under public comment. Gonna show a lot of pictures of the recovery and the response of city staff to this. And we've allotted Public Works Director Kevin Cothee 15 minutes. And then I believe we have 15 minutes of discussion. But just a reminder, while we touch on the storm response this evening, the longer, more in-depth conversation and presentation is gonna be at the committee, the whole meeting in August. Kevin?
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor and council. We have a presentation tonight, if we could get that up. So we're all aware of the significant storm event that happened the last weekend of June, start Friday night, and then again, another big rain Saturday afternoon. So we did see, you know, a lot of areas that flooded twice in Bloomington. So we did see, you know, a lot of areas that flooded twice in Bloomington and a lot of different types of flooding. So we did have people out Friday night in response to, you know, the emergency, which was literally, you know, streets flooded, cars stalled, you know. As you know, there was a flood warning, a flash flood warning that night, and we truly did see those things. And so, you know, that night was that immediate response, just to make sure to keep people safe. And thank goodness, there was no loss of life or, you know, there's certainly enough property damage and enough damage to different parts of the city. But we're thankful no loss of life or serious injuries. Saturday, Public Works, we had crews out trying to clean up what we could and, you know, extensive effort and also an assessment of what we had seen the night before. And so you're, I'm gonna share with you a number of photos. Some were taken by myself. Another engineer has the drone license to fly a drone. We flew a drone and took pictures of things so we could understand the nature of the flooding across the community because it wasn't just one type of flooding. It was multiple impacts to different neighborhoods. And so that's what I'm gonna share with you tonight. This picture that's in the background is Sugar Creek just east of Clinton. And this is Saturday morning. The water's gone down, but, you know, you can see where the grass got matted down from how high it had been the night before. So next slide. This is a series of pictures starting Friday night. In the upper left is East Street, just south of the library. And what you're seeing there is the public service garage. And in the upper right corner of the picture is the fuel pumps, the Fuel Island, that was surrounded by water that night. Water did get in the no-led tank, and so Saturday it had to be pumped. Saturday afternoon, with the big rain again, it flooded again. Water got up, not quite as high, but it did flood it again. And so we were out with our no-led tank. We're out for several days until we could get that going again. But the public service building had had over a foot of water inside the shop areas and break rooms and so forth. And there was a time where the vehicles we had available to us were the ones that were out. We, you know, as noted, I mean, electrical issues and things can happen and flooded water. So we couldn't get into the building for a little while until the waters went down. But we were affected too. And in the upper right photo, you can see a car. This is zoomed in a little bit more to a car that was actually stalled. And this is looking, looking south again by the railroad tracks. And you can see the water is well over the hood. So there were several feet of water across that, that whole corridor from the intersection of Gridley and Oakland affected Home Sweet Home Mission. We all know that. So in this area, you see the combination sewers here were full, but we also had surface flooding. So we had people in a whole corridor through the core of Bloomington that had both, you know, significant backup through the combination sewers in excess of five, six, even seven feet, and the surface flooding both. So, you know, showing you all these pictures so you can get a sense of the, you know, impacts community-wide. The lower left is a picture out by Market Street and Peggy Lane. There was an area flooded still on Saturday. Business was impacted back there. And then the lower right is a camera during the storm. This is Clinton and Clinton and Washington. And you can see cars, you know, managing to get through the intersection, but, you know, significant flooding in the intersection, which, you know, our intersections, the roads tend to be built lower so that they take the runoff. So if you picture, you know, your homes and your private property are up higher, the rain that hits the roof of those homes has to go somewhere. And it's designed to head out and head to the streets and the alleyways and the swales, the drainage swales. And those lower spots are going to take more water than they can handle during big events. And, you know, that was the case here. And people need to recognize, most of the time intersections aren't flooded, but when they are, you know, we encourage people to, you know, turn around, don't drown type of thing because you don't know how deep it is, and you also don't know the impacts that the water may have caused to the pavement. And we'll get to some of that here in a couple more slides. So next slide, please. The upper left, Lake Bloomington spillway. It was well over the spillway on Saturday. And we get to a certain point, we have to start monitoring the dam every four hours to make sure there's no compromises to the dam. There's an emergency action plan. And we monitor it just to make sure that we don't have anything that would impact properties downstream. Upper right, Clearwater near Hershey. Once again, this is a low spot, what we call a sag. And all the water from the neighborhood runs this direction, and it just fills it up until, you know, the storm sewers and everything have the ability to drain it. But once again, you know, encourage people, don't drive through these things when you don't know how deep it is because you can stall your car. Lower left, Janet Drive at Gina. That's over by Sapphire Lake. And the detention basins in that east side of Bloomington were working hard overtime, both Friday night into Saturday and the storm Saturday afternoon. This is later in the evening. This is probably about 6:00. And it kind of looked like a big lake back there, but the detention basins worked. They helped prevent flooding downstream. The lower right is G at Airport. That's the Eagle Creek Basin. So if you picture, you know, Sapphire Lake drains to the west, this is, you know, there's two Eagle Creek basins. And you can see the basin was pretty full. It wasn't going over the top, but it was pretty full. And it had a lot of property owners worried out there because they had seen water levels higher and in their backyards than they'd ever seen before. So, next slide. This is out the east side of Bloomington towards the Grove. This is Saturday morning. This is well after the storm event, but before the afternoon rains. And this is the bridge on 2100 East. And you see the water's still almost up to the bottom of the bridge at this point. As many of you know, the storms Friday night tended to be a little bit heavier towards the south of Bloomington, Hayworth, and that area getting heavy flooding, and then it kind of ran on an angle towards Ellsworth. So this part of the Kickapoo Creek drains from further east. And so we were seeing a lot of water coming, coming at the Grove. The lower right is another picture along 2100 East that shows the debris line from the corn stubble that washed across the road. That whole area was underwater. The bridge was underwater during the night. And then the Grove subdivision, the flood plain, we all know the stream restoration out there is also not only helping with water quality, but helping to be a detention basin. You can see still on Saturday morning, it was really full. And there, to the right of that photo, was a trail that normally you can walk on, but, you know, was underwater at the time. So, next slide. Impacts to public property, to private property as well. The upper left is an area by Jackson and Woodland, not real far away from the Eastgate area. Just large lots have been this way for years. There's a lower area in those backyards. And you can see the dead grass. I mean, it held water, just like many of the farm fields have in the country where there's lots of crop damage and so forth with beans that were lost. This holds water back there, and it either soaks in or evaporates. But when the ground is this saturated from this much rain that we had before, you know, the ground can be like a sponge to absorb, but once that sponge is full, it can't take any more water. It just oozes out the side or, you know, just runs off the top. And that's what, what you see with the ground. It couldn't absorb any more water at the point of the storms. And so it ponded back there. Damage to public infrastructure. The upper right is Washington Street. We had a washout there by the inlet. We had somewhere better than 30 cave-ins and sinkholes that resulted from this heavy, heavy rain that we had. Another example that, the lower left is Gridley near Oakland. That picture is looking to the north along Gridley. We're just east of Home Sweet Home Mission. You know, the sewers might have had a hole in them or, you know, at some point. And we're taking in some dirt, but when you have this much water come at it this fast, it shows any weaknesses in the system and just can compromise it very quickly. So we'll be dealing with the aftermath of getting all these fixed for, for a number of weeks, if not months. And we have been fixing the most serious ones initially as far as the impacts to traffic. Washington Street was one that we addressed right away because that one was near the Norfolk Southern Line. And the railroad reported it to us because they were worried about compromising their track and their crossing because it was so close. So we were able to partner with the railroad and get, get that fixed. But they also, while we had the road closed, fixed their railroad crossing, which they were planning to do routine maintenance to it. And they just accelerated it a few weeks so that that could all be done under the same closing. Lower right, the Pony League Fields on Island Grove out by Towanda Barnes. Impacts to private property. You can see the area where the picture's taken is Goldwitzer. But the parking lot is right in front of you, and the fields are to the left, and the whole thing looked like a big lake. So, next slide. Some other pictures of Sugar Creek near Illinois Wesleyan. Upper left is a drone shot over by Fell Bridge. And the right is Clinton Bridge near Sugar Creek there. And both bridges in the last 20 years have been replaced. They used to be arch bridges. And the arch bridges don't allow water to pass as efficiently. So years ago, there used to be more flooding in these areas, but the newer, more modern bridge allows the water to pass better. And so one of the things we were doing with the drone was getting idea of how high did the water get along the creek in different places? Because, you know, if you have, you know, 100-year, 500-year rain or 1,000-year rain, whatever you want to classify it as, the floods are, you know, FEMA flood zones are 100 and 500. But that doesn't necessarily correlate exactly to a rain event because a rain event is not a flood event. If you think about a town like Peoria that is a river city, you know, they can get a flood that's 100-year flood, but they didn't necessarily have 100-year rain there. So they don't necessarily correlate one for one, but we wanted to get a sense of what did the storm do as far as the different impacts across Bloomington? How far did it get out of the banks of the creek and that type of thing? And for the most part, Sugar Creek stayed within its banks. There's a few places where we know it exceeded. But, you know, when you have the aftermath of these events, one of the things we're gonna do is get that quick assessment to see, you know, what, this is a time to get data. And so we were getting data, but we're also trying to do sriage by helping get roads open again, help, you know, what we could with the different situations throughout Bloomington and just, you know, get that quick assessment while we still had the opportunity to collect the data. Next slide, please. So this is a map that shows with those triangles, the claims that were submitted to our PMA adjusters as of last week. This is not as of today, but as of last week. And what this shows you is that across the community, we had claims submitted, but the, you know, vast majority of the claims are in that area inside Veterans Parkway, inside the interstate because you can just see the density there. And, you know, you have a group of claims over by Eastgate. You have paths of claims that are closer to the center of town, you know, South Hill, a bunch of older neighborhoods that are all combined sewers. And so just gives you a sense of the impacts to the community. And even though it's more dense there, you can see that whether, you know, it's to the northeast or the southwest with Fox Creek impacts in different places, whether it be, you know, too much water coming too fast came in through the, you know, window wells or the egress windows or in some cases, even basement walls collapsed. We know of at least, at least 10 claims with basement walls that have collapsed in the community. And of course, once again, that's just so much water in the ground. The ground is so saturated that it puts a lot of pressure on foundation walls. And if those foundation walls have any part of weakness, it exposes that just like it does for our sewers where you saw the sinkholes. Next slide, please. This is the PMA claims overlaid on top of a sewer map. And so the colors there for the sewer map show in green, the sanitary lines. Those are just dedicated sanitary lines. Light blue is the storm lines. And the purple that you see kind of in the core of Bloomington, those are the combination sewers. And we still have, you know, roughly 85 miles of combination sewers in Bloomington. So it's not just Eastgate. It's not just downtown. It's a large, a large area of Bloomington is still served by combination sewers. Next slide, please. This lets you see the sewer layer a little bit better. The ones that kind of look like yellow in there, there's also sump pump drain lines. The newer parts of Bloomington tend to have sump pump drain lines, which gives a place for people to connect their sump pumps to, which also can help because we know that in some of the older parts of Bloomington in particular, sump pumps might be tied into the sewer system. And that just aggravates the problem. Not only is it against city code and against national standards, but it can actually cause more issues when they're tied in like that. So, next slide, please. So this was just a real quick overview tonight of some of the things that we've seen. And, you know, just to give you an idea of, you know, the different types of, whether it be, you know, basement backups from, you know, combined sewers, whether it be sump pump failures, groundwater coming in, surface flooding. We've seen all those different combination of things. And so we're collecting the data. PMA, there's still claims being turned into them. We've worked with, you know, McLean County Emergency Management. We've partnered with them to try to provide them data so that when they did their survey, they know what neighborhoods to go to to talk. We're gonna get data back from them at some point and try to map that. We've been tracking calls that have come into Public Works that came into dispatch. We didn't show all that to you tonight. We're gonna do an analysis and do a deeper dive in August to show you in more detail as we analyze these things, all the different impacts. Because there's no one quick answer for all this stuff. The, you know, quick answer for the combined sewers would be the overhead sewer program, as was mentioned tonight. And that is a program that's administered through economic and community development, and it's available to people. But, you know, there's a lot more with this whole topic that we could go into. And just wanted to give you that overview that, you know, there's a, I've given you a little bit of education tonight, but not, not very much, just a little bit. But we want to get into some of the more details and talk a little bit more about that June's, June storm event. You know, the sanitary system, the stormwater infrastructure, what we can do to help residents that, short-term, the long-term picture, review city codes because there's some things that, well, with city codes that, you know, some adjustments might help. And so a lot of different things to consider, and certainly any other items that you might, might have for us to look into. But we're in the midst of collecting and analyzing data. We just haven't got all the data collected yet where we can analyze it, get you all the answers yet. So that's why we're looking towards the August committee, the whole, to go with that deeper dive. So I'll turn it over to, oh, next slide is questions, so. Turn it back to the mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kevin. Those were informative. Do we have any questions? Looks like I'm sure, yes. Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Ward?
Thank you. That was, the most helpful part of that I found was to be able to see the map. So thank you very much for that, especially to see the map with all that purple, which is very distressing because there's a lot of purple. And I am curious if you could give us just a little bit of background on how the priority was, how areas have been prioritized for attention? Because I'm hearing the concern that, that some areas are not happening until 2029 for some kind of remediation. But I'm also hearing from many residents concerns that they're not even on a plan, much less in 2029. And so I'm just curious if you can give some background about how it has come to be that certain areas were starting here and not other areas? And then I have some follow-up questions, please.
I guess, real quick, and Kevin, you can respond to that briefly, but that's going to be a part of that deeper dive at the community as a whole in August. Kevin?
Yeah. Thank, thank you, City Manager. Yeah, and there's a lot of, I'll try to give you a real quick Reader's Digest version, but there is the deeper dive because there's a distinction between combined sewer overflow CSOs and combined sewers. And we'll get into that a little bit more later. But the Locust Colton CSO study was done like in 2007 timeframe and came up with recommendations on how to get rid of a combined sewer overflow. And the city took the recommendation to go ahead and separate the sewers because that not only benefits the environment from eliminating combined sewer overflow, but also benefits the residents in the long term because the sewers are separate now, just like the, you know, most of the east side is where you minimize impacts from, you know, basement backups through floor drains and that type of thing. So that, that report lined out the process to go through because you have to start at one end and work your way to the other to be able to have sewers to receive the flow as you separate. So that's all lined out in that, that report about how to proceed through that.
I guess what I'm, what I'm still not clear on is the distinction between CSOs and combined sewers and how it is that Locust Colton was, was chosen as the place to start, for example.
Most, and we'll go into that deeper dive with the CSOs. There was, the city had a lot. Most, and we'll go into that deeper dive with the CSOs. There was, the city had a lot of CSOs at one time. And there's only basically Locust Colton and Maze Field are the two CSOs that are left. And we have a permit from the I E P A to operate those CSOs. But the one at Locust overflows more than four times a year. And so they said, you can't do that anymore. You're going to have to get rid of it. So there was the pressure from the EPA to get rid of the Locust CSO.
So a CSO is what? Can you just define that in, in terms that, that I can easily explain to somebody who's not an engineer?
Well, and like I say, we'll go into the deeper dive, but in essence, what it is, is a spot where the combined sewer can overflow into a body of water like, like Sugar Creek. So it's a spot where it gets so full, overflows into the creek. So, you know, everybody's, you know, recognizes that the basements get the backup, right? Well, then instead of the basement getting the backup, it goes into the creek type of idea. But in a really heavy event, the CSO is running, but the basement's still back up because there's just too much water. I know that we'll have diagrams and explain it more. Like I said, it's a pretty, the subject is pretty deep.
It's deep.
And I don't mean in a pun, but, but really there's a lot to it. It's not, yeah.
Well, I guess what I'm hearing is that the CSO is a concern because it's running into a creek.
Yes.
But that, the combined sewers that are not CSOs are running into people's basements.
Understand. Yeah. Well, and recognize too, that most communities of our size and age have combined sewers. And, and certain communities end up, you know, getting in trouble with the EPA and have a consent decree where they're ordered to spend so much to eliminate the CSOs, not the combined sewers, but the CSOs. And so those can be different approaches. You can, you can eliminate the CSO, but you can still have combined sewers, which still can cause a basement backup. So.
And is there any, is there any possibility that eliminating a CSO in one neighborhood then, or a CS in one neighborhood then has an impact on somebody downhill? So when you, when you eliminate one, do you potentially cause more problems elsewhere? I'm struck by the difference in the, the amount of, of water that's in various basements. And so in, in some basements in Ward seven, for example, on at least three streets that I can think of, people were measuring the sewage and water in feet, not inches. So not six inches, but six feet and in their, their houses. And.
And, yeah, and we'll get into that more in August because we're, you know, collecting that data, analyzing. I know you want all the answers tonight, but it's, suffice it's safe for now, you know, water runs downhill, right? So as, as you follow the Mississippi out, you know, right? It starts with the Illinois and then Sugar Creek runs into the Illinois and Sangamon and all that stuff. And it gets bigger and bigger as it goes, right? So as you head to the west side of Bloomington, the sewers are all running downhill along with all the water. So they get bigger and bigger. So those are bigger sewers. But as that water gets more massive, you know, like along the Mississippi and Illinois, when you have those big, you know, like the 93 flood and stuff like that, you see, you know, the, the impact of all that water hitting a spot. It's kind of the same way that you're seeing on the west side where those bigger pipes are. There's more impact because all the water's headed that way. And so you not only have, like I say, the, the combined sewer surcharging, but you actually have surface flooding where it's not just an intersection that flooded because all the, everything is draining to it. It's actually draining across the city because those combined sewers in general follow the old waterways, you know, across the city. And so you're seeing both happen there.
Yeah. Well, I guess I'm, I'm distressed by that because probably 80 to 90% of the people on one of the worst hit streets in, on the west side, they don't have any kind of insurance. So there's, there's no, you know, claim to be put through to anybody except for us as, as a city. And, and I think we owe them more than, than what we're, we're doing. And I'm not saying you personally, I'm not saying you personally, I'm saying that we as a city owe them better than that. Couple other questions.
I know we, we're running out of time, so we'll have to.
I'd like to move.
Just a motion so we can.
I'll, I'll move.
I'll second.
Second, okay. Sounds good. How long?
I'll say 30 minutes.
30 minutes. Okay. Sounds good. Madam, could you please call the rule?
Thirty.
Thirty. Actually thirty.
Okay, you can hear me now. Councilmember Matthew.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin. Extension of 30 minutes. Councilmember Montney.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
I.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. No names to announce. So you can go ahead.
Yeah. So I, I just think we as a city, our, our residents deserve better. They, and, and I'm not, again, not pointing any fingers at any specific person because these, as we've already heard, these issues have been going on for decades. So I just want to say that though. The other thing that I, two other broad areas that I want to, want to ask about have to do with detention basin possibilities. So can you make a point of addressing those in the August meeting if you can't address that now? But one in particular that you and I have already spoken about, Mr. Coty, has to do with the, the old Nikor plant there south of Sheridan. You know, I had residents who literally had feet and feet and feet of water up to the, the door handles of their, their cars, you know, and SUVs along that area. Any, anything you can say about detention basins on the west side in that, that regard?
Yeah. And we'll get into that more at the August meeting, you know, that, because as, as you know, you know, the older parts of Bloomington don't have much for detention basins. And so, you know, having detention basins has helped, I think, with the east side. And then, you know, with the rest of Sugar Creek, because, you know, I grew up in the community. I, I was born and raised or I went to VHS. I remember, you know, personally seeing the floods in the seventies and stuff and, and Sugar Creek well out of its banks and stuff. And in, in general, with this storm, we didn't see much of Sugar Creek going out of its banks. There was a few places it did. And, you know, we were trying to check the systems and, you know, we saw a couple detention basins that went over and stuff like that. But in general, for the most part, a lot of things did really well. But, you know, obviously the older infrastructure with combination sewers and stuff has its issues and that manifested itself in the storm again. So.
Yeah. Yeah. And then what has the experience been in the city with over, the overhead sewer program? I know that when you and I talked, you said this is a very underutilized program. And it doesn't surprise me, given how hard it is to find information. When I raised this with the council, with my fellow council members a week ago, nobody seemed to have heard of it and even struggled, they struggled to even find information about it. So what has been the experience? Have, have, how much have, how frequently have people used this? And is there any concern about one house doing the overhead sewer program and then the house across the street having problems? I'm, I'm just wondering if there is any track record in that regard, because the last thing I want is for one, you know, if I, if I go get the overhead sewer thing in place, I don't want my next door neighbor or my across the street neighbor now to suddenly have problems when they didn't have it before. So I'm wondering what our experience with that has been.
Yeah. And, and once again, we'll go into that more in August too. But in general, the experience with the overhead sewer program for those that have done it has been very positive. But there can be impacts to other, other neighbors because, you know, traditionally the lowest house, the lowest basement is going to get it first as far as the sewer backup, right? And then, you know, if they do the overhead sewer, now the next door neighbor might get it. And we have seen that before in neighborhoods. There'll become a point where if enough people do it on the block, then it just, it, it takes care of it. And, and it doesn't happen anymore as far as getting other neighbors affected, but, but it can.
And so it's my understanding that, that the program has about $50,000 a year.
Right, right now.
Right now?
Forty. Yeah.
About forty?
Yeah.
And how many, how many projects would that cover?
The, the program.
Ten? Somebody's gesturing back there.
The, the program offers, you know, up to $4,500 per single family residence of funding from the city. So if you have 40,000, you're talking, you know, basically nine under the current funding. But certainly, you know, the, as the council and his staff, we could recommend, you know, perhaps some budget amendments or using some money or whatever to fund that. I'm sure the demand is going to increase given the, you know, like, like we showed, showed you the over 500 claims from PMA or two PMA, you know, and a, and a good chunk of those could be helped by the overhead sewer. I was out with the, you know, group on Sunday out at the junior high. And a lot of the people that came in on Saturday and Sunday to speak with us, a lot of them could benefit from the overhead sewer program. So I think there'll be a lot more interest than we have funding for in this budget here.
And then one last question. I know I'm dominating things here, but I'll, I'll just throw this out here. What is the reason it takes so long to deal with this? Is it a question of a lack of will, a lack of means? Does it take a long time to get it physically finished? What's the reason behind it?
As, as far as like separating the sewers or, you know, the local Colton or?
Both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Multi, multi parts to that answer. Obviously, funding is a big component. We have to have the funding in place to be able to do the whole thing. The, you know, design permitting and then construction, that can take, you know, a few, few years to get that all going. But then when you get a very large construction project, sometimes our, our local contractors may or may not have the wherewithal to be able to take, to do something like that in a year or two. And then there's also a lot of impacts to the neighborhood. When you do it all at once, you're, you're, you know, I'm sure some of you have heard, you know, like at Mercer in Washington where we've been working, there's been a number of complaints about people can't get to their homes and stuff and have to walk a block and that type of thing. When, when you do all that underground work, you tend to be very disruptive to neighborhoods. And so the more you disrupt at one time, even the further people have to walk or whatever and that type of thing. So it was laid out in the study way back when in various phases that could be, you know, reasonably managed in, in smaller chunks. But there's, there's other ways to, you know, handle it if, if that's the direction the council wants to go.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Okay. Thank you. It looks like Councilmember Crable has been pretty patient.
Thank you. And you might have to be patient with me as well. You know, the, the residents of East Gate who have been here two weeks in a row have expressed their concerns and their questions. And, you know, I understand their frustration that they're not getting their answers, you know, as, as quickly as possible. So I'm going to ask some questions. I really, really think Alderwoman Ward asked some great questions, but I think it's important to get these questions out, even if they can't get answered tonight. Then they know, then you and the other city staff know that there are questions that you need to work on getting, getting answers to. So is it possible that the, the, that the Locust Colton CSO work could be done at a quicker pace? Is it possible, assuming there was funding? Assuming, you know, that you had capacity from contractors, is it possible?
I, I think it's possible. I think it's, if that's the direction you'll need to look at a little bit closer, but I think it's possible to move it along a little quicker.
And is it true that, that these, the phases that have been going on for the, for the CSOs? That's, that's been to prevent like sewage from going into Sugar Creek and other places. Have we had any projects where we've been working to correct the combined sewer outside of CSOs?
Not recently.
Okay. And then, so I'm going to follow up on the overhead, overhead, whatever you call it, lines.
Overhead sewer program.
Sewer program. If, is there limitations? Can anyone that has a combined sewer, will that be effective for, for everyone, I guess, is what I'm saying, that has a combined sewer? Or there are some people that maybe their plumbing is facing the wrong side of the street or something like that where this would not be effective?
Each home is different, if you will, the way it's built and constructed and so forth. When somebody applies for the program, Tony Brown, who was mentioned before, gets involved. And there's a number of assessments that are made with a plumber to assess sewer service lateral that goes from the house to the street, the way the plumbing is set up in the house, and to try to figure out a way to make it work. So it's not necessarily one size fits all and exactly, you know, this is how it always looks. But I, I'm not aware of where you can't make it work. But, you know, I, I'm not involved with the installation of the overhead sewer program that's handled by Economic Community Development.
Okay. Okay. So.
Well, and, and, you know, there may be some other work that has to be done, like there's things called whole house traps that were used back in the day. When you do the overhead sewer, you, you have to take those out. So there may be some other modifications. So I don't want to say that just the overhead sewer by itself, but in combination with whatever upgrades need to be done, a house can be made to, to work with that overhead sewer where you don't get the basement backup through the floor drain, through the toilets, through the shower, whatever downstairs. Yeah. Right. I, I really don't. That, Tony Brown would probably be better able to answer that and, and we can certainly get that information for August. Yeah. Yeah. The, the presentation should be available now with those maps and so forth. The, the combined sewers, the overwhelming, you know, because, because when a sewer is surcharged, right, then it backs up. You know, it, it was mentioned about, you know, cleaning and televising. We, we are doing that a lot more than we used to 10 years ago with the cleaning and televising. You're all, all aware that, you know, in the last year, year and a half ago, we did a big CCTV contract to get a lot of the, you know, sewers televised and assessed. So we're doing a lot more with those things. But there, with the combined sewers, it just, all that rain coming so quickly just overwhelms the pipe. And so that's where you get the surcharge from.
Sorry. Sorry to interrupt. Just a second. I apologize. Councilmember Crable, your mic is off and we're unable to hear you online. So.
Oh, sorry.
Nope, you're good. Just want to make sure. Picking it.
So where's my train of thought?
We can come back to you.
Naomi. So, okay. So would you say there's a, when a heavy rain event occurs like this, that people with CS systems have unique issues that others without that system have?
Well, when, when you have separated sewer systems, what happens is the sanitary sewer is not getting all the rainwater in it. The storm sewer is, and so the storm sewer will back up. And then the storms, you know, the, the idea there is that having a good flood route and, and that's something else we'll cover in August, because some people on the east side have landscaped into the flood router, put a fence and it interferes with the flow of water that wants to get away. And we'll talk about that more in August. But the, the combined sewers, you know, like I say, in the old parts of Bloomington where especially to the west side, we not only saw the, the basement backup, but also the surface flooding.
Right.
As, as, as we, we saw in some of the pictures tonight. Yeah.
And based on the investigation that the city has done so far, is it fair to say that the combined sewer system did, did play a role in some people's houses flooding and the type of floods they had?
The, the basement backups are the result of the combined sewers getting overwhelmed. Now, we did have in a few cases, sanitary sewers that got overwhelmed and actually backed up in people's homes on the east side too. Those are, those are much rarer and usually there's something else going on there. And so we're, like I said, we're collecting data points on all these different things. And it takes time to look at and analyze each one. But, but certainly the combined sewers, I mean, that, that's something that's been known for a long time. As, you know, some of the people here have said that, you know, it's not, not anything new. They've had backups before.
Okay, um, I'm gonna gather myself, maybe I have a few additional questions to pass it over now.
Sounds good. Thank you. Um, so next we have, uh, Councilmember. Creo.
Thank you. Um, I guess, uh, I first, uh, want to thank everybody who shared testimony tonight. And also recognize that this is just a fraction of the number of the people who have been affected. Many folks cannot come to these meetings, but certainly we have been um, getting their emails and their phone calls. I guess, uh, you know, when I echo Councilmember Ward's uh, statement that our residents do deserve answers and answers with the level of urgency that they are feeling as their basements are covered in sewage. Um, and so I guess one question for us and, and I guess maybe for Tim, I mean, is the reason that we have to wait till August is because there's just not another meeting? Could we have a special meeting where we talk about this sooner uh, than August? Or is it a matter that we're waiting on something to come in that isn't going to come in until August? Because it does feel like a really long time to wait to, to get into some of these things.
We can ramp this up uh, as soon as council and the community wants, but there's a couple of things and I'm not trying to talk anybody out of anything. You know, at a time that we have a disaster like we've had, small and scaled as some of the things that I've experienced in other communities, we need to pull together. Staff want to put the elected officials on the firmest ground so that they can be responsive to the residents on what the facts are before we start writing checks or spending money. Uh, so I feel that that's my responsibility as city manager. So we were asking for time to one, clean up, also assess what the damages were. If uh, you want us to move this up to a sooner date, council meeting next week or the first council meeting in August, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that I provide the accurate information, tell the entire story so that council's on the firmest ground to make the decisions that's before you.
I appreciate that. Yeah, and I mean, I certainly would be supportive of moving that up to the next council meeting with the understanding that we're not going to have all the answers then, but that something is probably better than nothing and that this should be an ongoing conversation and not a, you know, not a, a one and done. So certainly I would be supportive of that. Um, but you know, maybe that's something we can get a temperature check from other folks um, around. I guess my other question is, the uh, overhead sewer program, you know, sounds like it could be beneficial to some residents, but again, the funding is limited and the number of projects that can be taken on is also limited. So my question, I guess, uh, to Mr. Cothee is like, yeah, if money was no object, right, like, we'll, we can figure about how we get funding for this, but what would be um, a less individualized solution that is maybe a middle step between, you know, complete separation of sewers through the entire city, which would be super costly and take a long time. I'm not saying that that doesn't mean that we shouldn't make a plan to do it. But what would be maybe a more uh, collective type of solution for a neighborhood or for some of these areas that have been hardest hit?
That's, that's a great question. And there's not necessarily one size fit, fits all answer to that, because each neighborhood and the way it lays, you know, with the terrain and everything is slightly different. I, I think that we have uh, potentially some ideas that might, might help um, some of those more severely impacted areas. As, as was uh, you know, mentioned about possibility of partnering with NICOR um, in their remediation site to, to, you know, if, if, if you have a detention basin and you have a place for the water to go and sit without flooding anybody, that benefits not only the, the, the people upstream, but also downstream, because now you're not sending too much water too fast downstream either where things can't handle it. So I, I think, you know, detention basins that have been built, because detention basins are a fairly new thing. That, that started in the eighties really with the city. Um, and we can see now, you know, forty years later, um, that the detention basins have had a tremendous impact, I think, on, on flooding and we want to tell that story too. That's part of collecting all this data and, and I, I think that there may be some other opportunities there and we're, we're not prepared at all to address that tonight or maybe even next week or whatever, but there's, there's certainly things that could be considered.
Yeah, I think that, 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 that's what makes sense to me. I spent some time in El Paso, Texas where you would drive by and there would be these retention basins everywhere and because their, their system just wasn't built to support a ton of rainwater. I guess, um, I guess I will just make some space for other folks to ask questions. Um, but, but thank you. And yeah, would appreciate it if we could continue the conversation.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, I'll get to you.
Thanks, Kevin. Um, so first I do support the idea of having more meetings or not necessarily more meetings, but an ongoing conversation. Uh, I'm gonna be traveling for the next couple of weeks and I won't be here, but I'll be watching. Um, and I think that people do want more answers. Um, I was gonna ask about the detention basins as well. I know that the the plan that we have right now for the Locust Colton has a couple of detention basins, specifically um, just to the south of the Public Works Garage is one of the locations. And I think there was another one um, on the west side near an old NICOR location, I think is what it called out for those. And uh, you know, I was gonna ask the question, to put on your list of agenda items, how fast can we get those built? And well, I guess, one, what would be the impact of building those to hold that, that water before it goes to the west side? Um, you know, obviously Home Sweet Home is in Ward One and that entire area around that, that entire corridor down Oakland Avenue was a river at, at, at a certain point. Would a detention basin there just south of Public Works Garage, if that was constructed, would that help to keep uh, drain the Oakland Avenue corridor and then prevent water from going to the west side because South Hill was underwater at the, at the same time? So I'd like to see that on the agenda as something we're talking about, but the, probably the two most important things that were on your list of things were how much and how soon, right? I think we're all want, we all want that information. Without that basic information, we can't make educated decisions. Um, I've never seen a plan that addresses any sort of um, water drainage for the west side. If there is one, I would love to see it. I've never seen that happen at all uh, yet. So if you have that, please send it to us. But that's kind of where I'm at is, you know, I'm gonna be gone the next couple of weeks. I'll be watching the videos. But how much, how long? And will those detention basins that are in the plan, will they help sooner than later? And that, that's where I'm at on right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Matthew. Let's just go with you. Yeah, just go.
So I want to add one thing to, to Councilmember Matthews' question, how much and how soon, but what is the capacity for work? Right? Yeah, you mentioned that before. So knowing how much is possible is really important. And then I wanted to add one thing, and I think others have said it pretty well, but I want to make it maybe more specific. In the absence of communication, that's the biggest frustration for people. And when we say, maybe the right answer is we should wait till August to have some portions of these discussions. But when they sit here and here, we'll wait till August, we'll wait to August. When you're dealing with something, that level of stress really hurts people. I think we need to find a way to be communicating whatever little step we do, whatever action is being taken, even on a daily basis. I think Catherine did a lot around the bulk pickup is an example. So I think the, the improvement in the communication has gotta be a step that we take sooner, uh, just to, to help people to, to see the progress and to see what's happening. It's a little easier to wait when you know that something is moving, when you're just sitting back and nothing is there.
Thank you.
Gets easier as we go along. So I, I agree that we need to have this conversation earlier. I've, I've read enough EPA reports just to be a little bit dangerous. Um, so just adding to the kind of information that, that would be useful for me is um, something about uh, long-term and short-term, but that midterm that Councilmember Ward brought up earlier, that there are nine minimal controls that you can investigate in order to keep this, this thing from happening. And then there's a long-term planning approach. Um, and that this is really systemic, that it's not just about the sewers, but it's, there's so many other levers that we might be able to push. And that, of course, ties into um, getting the information and I appreciate that that's what you want to do. And uh, determining from that, you know, how we can, we can think about how soon, how much, what the capacity is and um, the immediacy. Um, certainly just, just being part of the conversation and pushing forward is really helpful. Um, the other thing I, I, I want to bring up other than communication uh, being critically important around everything from the, the overhead program to uh, to just information about the, the process of reviewing claims and how that's going, um, is the, the notion that um, we consider other funding options for people who have experienced such great loss. Like is there, is there some grant? Is there some mechanism for folks to apply for, for some support to support what just happened? And um, and I think that would be really valuable for us to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Montney and Councilmember Crumpler, I haven't forgotten about you.
Thank you, Kevin. Was the Locust Colton um, plan, the plan that was created that we must do in response to the EPA?
We, we need to uh, be able to close that uh, Locust CSO and that the plan achieves that with the completion of the project.
And based on the information that was available online, it looked like phase two concluded in twenty thirteen, but then um, phase three, or I may have these two, um, or phase one was completed in twenty thirteen, but phase two didn't bid out until early this year. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's, the, the original, you know, nine-phase plan was slightly adjusted in, in the original phase one project. We added more to it. Back in that timeframe, um, there was stimulus money available and twenty-five percent principal forgiveness. And so we jammed, put into that phase one project was, was more than the original one included like parts of seven. I, I can't tell you the specific off the top of my head on that, but it had more packed into it than the original phase one. Um, and then, you know, the, the funding approach that has been used today has been to use the EPA low-interest loans, the state revolving fund, they call it. Um, and, and that's a, a money set aside to help communities like us deliver, you know, improvements to sewer systems, like to separate them or even in water systems and stuff, those are two different pots of money, one for potable, potable water and the other for you know, sewage and uh, that type of thing. So we've in general been uh, you know, have to put our plan together, submit it to the EPA for permitting, but also submit it for a loan uh, authorization. And, and that can take, you know, it's a process. You, and there's only so much money. Then we're told, well, you didn't make it this year, you have to wait till next year type of thing. So if, if the council and, and finance director agree, you know, there's other options like general obligation bonds or something like that, but we've relied uh, up till now on the state revolving fund to help fund these projects as we move along.
How much did phase one cost?
I don't remember exactly off the top of my head. We'll, we'll have that for August, but I, I'm, I'm, I don't want to.
I mean, I, I saw something online that, and I don't want to put a number out there that's not correct, because you know, there's a lot of material out there on this, but I, I saw a number somewhere that alluded to the fact that around eight million would conclude the execution of all of this work on the Locust Colton project. Um, I don't know if that sounds in the ballpark to you?
We, we just um, internally revamped some numbers and like I said, that'd be part of the larger, deeper dive with, and we can accelerate that too. I just, I don't have that in front of me tonight, so I, I don't want to say without, you know, without having the actual numbers.
So would part of the reason that these next phases is drawn out over such a long period of time because of your prior experience with being funded to move from phase one, which ended in twenty thirteen to phase two, which started and is going to be executed, it sounds like by the end of twenty-one? So it sounds like within that one calendar year, you're going to go from bid to complete.
Right. So, so part of um, you know, the, the sewer and the sanitary are enterprise funds um, and supported by revenues from principally the utility bills. In order to get the low-interest loans from EPA, you have to show that you have sufficient funds to repay the loan. And if you remember, a few years ago, we did uh, uh, you know, a rate increase for sewer and storm. It wasn't until that rate increase that the storm got healthy enough to actually be able to support getting another loan type of thing. So there's a lot of things at play. It's not just, you know, engineering and permitting, but also when you rely on other, other types of funding like that, everything has to come together to show that you're capable of repaying that loan over that period of time. So.
So this is though, a permitted use of funds from the relief plan, isn't it? The combined sewer overflow work?
Yeah.
So that would be, it sounds like maybe a game changer for you if you've been having to depend upon piecing together various opportunities to borrow money over the years.
To make a difference.
You know, as we think about the use of that money, we can spend that money, um, or we can invest that money. And the Locust Colton plan is one I believe that it stated in the materials, you have to do anyway. It's just a matter of when. So um, you know, that would seem to be um, an opportunity for us to consider as this conversation continues.
Thank you. Councilmember Bullen.
Yeah, I'm not gonna repeat anything that anyone else said, but I'm trying to clarify in my head. The priority is to get the CSOs done first and then the combined sewers, or do you do that kind of together, like starting uphill and moving downstream?
Well, in, in, in order to eliminate a combined sewer overflow, if you get rid of the combined sewers that go to it, you know, then everything's separated that allows you to close it off. So the strategy has been to work from the combined sewer overflow back upstream. So, so the first phase started down, uh, you know, through the uh, VHS ball field and stuff. May have remembered seeing that all tore up. It's been several years ago now. And then across the country club. And that, that establishes a separate sewer for the sanitary and a separate sewer for the storm from, you know, the source type of thing is what, what we're working on. Until we get the whole thing done, we can't fully uh, complete the separation.
Sure. So it's, look, my understanding then is more like area by area, you're working downstream?
Actually working upstream.
Upstream.
We start, we start downstream and then work our way upstream.
Okay.
And that's specific to, you know, that uh, east side area that, that drains towards Locust Colton. There's plenty of other combined sewers, as you saw on the map, throughout the rest of Bloomington that don't drain that way. They drain other directions and that type of thing.
Okay. And sort of along the lines of some of the other comments, um, how much did Locust Colton cost?
Yeah, the, the original phase, yeah. I, I don't remember off.
You don't remember?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to have those numbers in front of me.
Oh, sure. Because I would also like to reiterate, I think that since the CSOs are allowed with the federal um, relief funding for COVID, that we should seriously consider accelerating to the point, you know, to the maximum.
Thank you, Councilmember Bullen. Uh, we are at the end of the time we extended, so we might need more. Yes, yes, that's what I'm saying.
Motion to extend for ten minutes.
Okay, second by, okay, Councilmember Becker. Sorry, first. Okay, thank you. Madam Creo, would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Matthew?
Yes.
Councilmember Bullen?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Creo?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Crumpler, you can go. And how much are we extended by? Let's say fifteen?
We, we say ten?
Doesn't it? Ten? Okay, all right, let's go. Let's go with ten.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Kevin, for um, being with us this evening and for your, you know, for your patience and answers. And I, I know it's a complicated problem. Um, I appreciate the detailed questions from my colleagues, Councilmember Ward and Crumpler. And I guess I, I want to make a comment, um, thinking about the future. Two things that have really stood out for me this evening was our, are the longstanding historical problems that um, we've heard from the residents of East Gate. Um, this has been going on a long time. And so much of this seems to be tied um, to funding. And so, I mean, I, I guess, given the tremendous losses. And so, I mean, I guess, given the tremendous losses that the residents of East Gate have described to us in the last two sessions of this council meeting and the other areas that have been experienced, I really want to strongly urge this council to investigate committing resources from the American Recovery, American Resources Act, to really accelerate the work in these areas, to accelerate the replacement of these outdated and inadequate sewer systems for the neighborhoods that have been, that have been devastated by these floods. And I think to not do this is simply unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else who wished to speak?
Had a few follow-up if everybody else is already gone or wants to go, that wants to go.
Quick, hold on.
Sure. I, I think, you know, this meeting goes to show that, you know, when you show up and you make your voices heard, you know, whether it's city council or staff or city leadership, you know, we listen. And so I really appreciate you all coming out twice now. And, and so just, just a few follow-up questions on this. How, when will we know with regard to whether the city will pay any of the claims? Do, whether that's City Manager Gleason or you, Kevin? Do we have any idea of when those decisions might start to be made to give some idea to the people that have made claims?
I actually shared that in this last week's city manager update to the elected. We fully expect PMA to start sending those letters out this week.
This week, okay. And, and then on that, since this is a, you know, it, it's, we, the city is self-insured. And the PMA is our third-party administrator. Who is making the decisions with regard to what is paid or not paid?
That's what we've hired PMA to make those decisions.
Gotcha. Okay. With any, you know, we fairly recently approved an insurance policy program for the city. Would any of the city's coverage apply to the, the flooding events that happened?
If I understand your question, I don't believe so.
Okay. Any idea when we'll know whether we will receive any aid from the state or the federal government?
The county and, and education for the community, not just those that are in the chambers. On a disaster declaration, it passes up from the local government to the county government. So this is Chairman McIntyre. He's declared a disaster. We have Illinois emergency management that's been on ground, on, on the scene, doing the assessment. And we will apply for a public assistance declaration through FEMA. That denial or approval should come at some point. I'm not sure what the timeframe is. But let's say we do not hit that threshold, which it's actually very high for the state of Illinois in large part because of the population in Chicago and Cook County. I've experienced that in the past. We do have recourse through the state of Illinois that fully expect the elected officials are going to pursue that with the state elected and will do what we possibly can at the, at the state level if we're denied at the federal level.
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. I also just wanted to mention, there was one person in public comment saying that they weren't able to get their bulk waste out. And, and they're actually having people, volunteers help them. So I just want to, I just hope that maybe at least maybe on a one-off and when people contact the city and they have, still have waste related to the storms, that the city will pick that up without charge.
You're stealing my thunder because that was coming under my city manager comments that we're going to wrap up bulk waste tomorrow, this special bulk waste run. And that's definitely Councilmember Crable, that's what we're going to do.
Okay. And I'll just leave this question hanging maybe to answer next time because we won over this. One of the other programs I think that may help with combined sewers is the sewer cleaning program.
Yeah. And, you know, the big contract that we awarded about a year and a half ago, that televising, that's televising and cleaning. So we've been out there doing that. And the city, you know, with our vector trucks and our camera trucks, whenever we hear a concern that, you know, this is suspect, we go out and check it out right away. And.
Excuse me, excuse me, you can't speak, sorry.
And, you know, with, with the televising, you can see if it's, you know, got problems in the sewer, whether it's, you know, grease, grease plugs or other types of defects. And we're trying to get those addressed as soon as we can. But in, in general, you know, tho- those combined sewer areas, the backup was just because of all the, all the water all at once.
Right.
The ones that we've gone to check out in general haven't shown any, any, anything in them as far as being blockages. We do have the 30, 60, 90 program, which is locations where we know there's a recurring problem and we go out and check those every, every 30 and 60 and 90 days on, on a continuing basis. And, and once we find that there's a continuing problem, which tends to be more of a grease or a root problem as opposed to anything else, we do a regular cleaning there, you know, on a regular basis.
All right. Thanks so much, Kevin, for being on the hot seat for so long.
Okay. And it looks like Councilmember Ward has one question.
One question and one comment. Um, the question is that, and you may not have this at your fingertips yet. I would love to know how much the city, how much this flood is, has cost the city already. Just this one. I, and I don't expect that you would have it at your fingertips, but it seems to me like, like it would be useful to, to know that at some point because that helps me to understand. I'd, I'd much rather be putting the money into preventing it from happening than cleaning up after it happens. I, I think we all do. And then I just want to say thank you for the, the efforts to do the bulk trash pickup, particularly the overtime this weekend. And I, I thank Assistant City Manager Billy Tyus for his role in that as well. I don't know who all was involved in making that decision, but thank you for that, the extra work in Ward Seven anyway.
Okay, don't go yet. I just wanted to say thank you, Kevin, because you spent quite a bit of time answering questions for a presentation that was supposed to last only 15 minutes. So we really want to thank you. You provided a lot of good information. I, I do have a, I, I, I want to get answers very quickly to folks, but at the same time, I want to make sure that the answers are accurate and that you have enough time to, to prepare. So I, I'm not sure, you know, it would help us to go too quickly. I mean, we might go a little quicker than the Committee of the Whole in, in August, but I don't know that next week, you know, you'll be ready. Do you think you'll be ready to provide more information?
I'll, I'll work with city manager.
Okay.
And we'll figure it out.
Okay.
You know, and it, it might be that we, we do it in pieces, right? So it's, because there's a lot to this topic. I mean, you all have asked, you know, very good questions and, and you can see there's a lot to it, even just the short introduction I had. So, you know, maybe, you know, we'll, we'll approach it in pieces or something like that, but we'll, we'll work that out.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. I thank you very much. I definitely appreciate that. And, and I think it's pretty clear that everyone wants to do the right thing for the community. We just have to figure out how we're going to get to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is 5B. Update on the American Rescue Plan Act and City Manager Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And totally by design, this is going to be a conversation that was following the previous agenda item. One, we wanted to just simply update the council and community on where we stand with the American Rescue Plan, the funds that we've received to date, the total funds that we expect, and then what we know up to this point on how we can use those funds. And infrastructure is definitely one of those allowable expended, allowable expenses. Finance Director Scott Rathman is going to walk us through what we know to this, up to this point, and more detail to come in the future, but wanted to have this conversation tonight. Scott.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor and Council. Not to go backwards, but we are tracking the expenses for the storm. Special project code has been set up. We'll have to use some assumptions related to overtime, landfill fees, you know, that kind of thing. But, you know, we'll do our best to, to ascertain what the cost of that event is for the city. So starting off with that, as the city manager mentioned, you know, tonight, we haven't received a lot of new information. The Treasury was accepting feedback on the guidance that issued up until July 16th. So it's still kind of a moving target, target as to the, what the final form of the guidance will be. But they've given a really, you know, pretty good general framework for the, for the available use of the funds. So we'll go over a recap of what the plan is tonight, where we are, what we've received, what we know about the further guidance, and, and kind of leave it at that. That's, that's kind of like the technical approach that we'll take to the American Rescue Plan and what we know right now. Next slide, please. So what is the American Rescue Plan? It's a, it's a $1.9 trillion COVID relief package that was approved on March 11th. There's $350 billion that was set aside for local governments. A significant amount of money is to be received by the city. I'll show you that in a second. It's about $13.4 million. But it's really, you know, to support the economy, support relief for people that were impacted. What is this stimulus package done so far? I don't have it up on the slide. But, but gross domestic product, the growth rate for the first quarter of the year was approximately 6.4%. So, you know, that averages maybe more around 2%. There was actually a reduction in the growth rate in the rate last year during COVID. They're expecting, the forecast, they're expecting a 9% growth rate during Q2. We're seeing here at the city, you know, revenues reflective of that stimulus package. So it's, it's really having a positive impact. And these American Rescue dollars that we've, we're getting at the city will have a very direct impact for the city. Just as an additional FYI, our unemployment rate as of May was 4.2%. The high last year was 12.9%. So we're seeing a good rebound there. The state for May was 7.1. They had a high of 16.5%. So, you know, we're, we're seeing that impact. Hopefully, you know, vaccination rates, the stimulus dollars, they're really having a very positive impact on the economy. Next slide, please. This is the dollar amounts that I was, I was mentioning previously, same dollar figures that I reported on in May. A total of $13.4 million has been allocated to the city. As soon as the portal was open at the Treasury, we put in our application and we received our, our first tranche they're referring to on May 19, 2021 for almost $6.7 million. And we should receive the second $6.7 million in approximately 12 months. That's what the guidance is saying now. They may change that, but that's the expectation at this point in time. And, and then you can see the bottom line of the slide, we have a lot of time to figure out what we want to utilize those dollars for. They must be obligated by 2024. So a contract in place encumbered, as we, we say at the finance department, with those dollars actually spent by 2026. So very material dollars we're looking at, have a very material transformational impact to the city, if you will, depending on how they're utilized. Next slide, please. This is the same slide that we, we reviewed in, in the prior Committee of the Whole, just example uses of the funds. There's four to six categories typically, and, and most of the information they put out, you see four, but this one shows a couple of additional ones. I just, the first category, upper left corner, is really just to reimburse communities for expenses they have related to mitigating COVID. To the right, addressing negative economic impacts. So this could be considered relief to residents and businesses. Could take many different forms. At the bottom left corner, replacing public sector revenue laws. This is probably the most versatile category related to how we can use the funds. And there has been more guidance that's, that's come out related to this, and I'll go over that in a moment. Those dollars must be used for the provision of government services, but that's a very broad and general guideline that the Treasury has issued. Our advisors, our auditors, you know, see basically keeping it between the, the guardrails was a term that was utilized for that. So very versatile line or category that we can utilize the funds for. And then premium pay for essential workers. So essentially for the frontline people, you know, that risk their lives, whether or not you wanted to, you wanted to go back and look and giving them premium pay. Next slide, please. And here's a subject that we were, that was discussed previously. So a very specific category is water and sewer infrastructure. We have broadband, the equity-focused services, sort of leveling the playing field for economically challenged areas of the city. We utilize it for that. And one thing I did, I'm going quickly. I know a lot of time has been spent this night. I want to get through this and give time for council to discuss. One, a question I have reached out to the Treasury on is related to, do we need to utilize these funds for unbudgeted items? With the CARES Act, that was very specifically ineligible. So if you had dollars that were budgeted in your operating budgets, you cannot utilize those dollars for that. It came back later and they said, well, scrap that. You can use it for public safety. And that's how we were able to access our $3.2 million for the CARES Act. Public safety compensation expenses were allowed, but otherwise no budget items. For the American Rescue Plan, budgeted items are eligible. So if we have something in our light item budget for the year, we can utilize those funds for that project. Next slide, please. So this slide is kind of, you know, what we've learned recent, over the last month and some steps we're looking at taking. So the loss revenue calculation, you know, thi- this was getting a lot of attention initially, as I mentioned, because it was considered maybe the most versatile category to utilize our funds. A lot of the webinars I attended, this was a very important topic that was discussed. A lot of questions came out. So the, the guidance came out and defined how the, the calculation should be done. So essentially the Treasury said you need to have a, a base year, which is defined as the, the first full fiscal, fiscal year, last full fiscal year prior to COVID. So for us, that was 2019. And then you can apply a 4.1% growth rate to that base year. And that, and that's pretty generous, a 4.1% growth rate. So I consider that kind of like a gift from the Treasury. I mean, they, they're trying their best to make sure these funds are available for communities to use. Not at will, but giving you a lot of flexibility with that. Now, they do need to standardize the reporting component. So they had that base year, it's based on your fiscal year, but the calculations are then based on a calendar year going forward. So we've only been able to calculate our revenue impact through December 2020. And again, it's for operating revenues. So these are kind of our operating funds excluding utilities. So that category, we can't include waters who were stormed, but that can be included in the, the water sewer infrastructure category. So there, you know, there, there's no question there. This is if we wanted to utilize dollars for the pool, O'Neill Pool or something of that nature. So as of right now, our calculations show that we have about an $8.1 million impact related to these guidelines. It's not necessarily a one-for-one impact that the city realized. You know, the 3.2 million that we got in, in 2020 for CARES, that was not included in this calculation. So, but those were dollars that we realized at the city that helped us substantially in 20, in fiscal year 2021. We've got more guidance on Treasury reporting. So we know we're going to have to issue an interim report in August 31st. The reporting period is through July 31st, 2021. There's nothing wrong with issuing a, a zero report or no activity report there. And then we're going to have to report quarterly thereafter. I haven't been through that whole set of screens related to how that is. It's going to be online. It's done through, through the Treasury portal. But we're keeping our eyes on the requirements of the act, making sure we're in compliance at all times and trying to just watch, watch for the updates. From accounting controls internal standpoint, we, we set up project codes right away at the beginning of COVID. They started with a seven. Those, you know, that's our COVID project code. For the revenue, I think this one's 7,500. So we have the American Rescue Plan. We booked the revenue into our accounting system and with the project code of 7,500. So any funds that are expensed related to that act, that plan, we'll be utilizing that project code too. So we can track it easily. We report on it easily to the, to you and the community. Full transparency, we have to obviously report to that, to the Treasury as well. The funds, so whether it's, it's at a minimum, it's an interest-bearing accounts. We use a pooled cash for the city. So our funds are in several different banks and, but we're accounting for it separately, if that makes sense. So our funds are in several different banks and, but we're accounting for it separately, if that makes sense. Interest rates are extremely low and I'm sure that's not a surprise to anyone. The Illinois funds rate, that's a, that's a fund that's administered by the State of Illinois, the Treasurer. It's like at 0.02% right now. You know, our, our sweep accounts are like money market accounts are 0.01%. So we are reviewing, engaging an investment advisor, not just related to the current rate, that interest rate environment, but it is kind of pushed that project along to see if we, you know, to what we can really realize from the funds. You know, the funds are an asset for the city to make sure that we're realizing the largest yield that we can, given the toughness of this interest rate environment right now. Next slide, please. Pause for questions, but so the, this presentation and the, and the one done in May, we don't have an American Rescue Plan page on the website. So I'm going to have, I've asked IT to put these presentations under the finance documents. We'll set up a COVID 19, a link. And then once we start expensing the funds, we might have a page just dedicated to that specifically. But in the interim, at least these presentations will be out. But just FYI for the community, for council mayor, the, the Treasury, if you Google Treasury, American Rescue Plan, there's a really, really nice homepage that they have. They're, they're doing an excellent job. They've got all the, the, the current documents with links to them. There's a frequently asked questions guide, quick reference guide. I'd have them all listed up there, eligible uses. There's the interim final rule, you know, I think I joked about that during the last meeting. You know, stringing those words together to me is, I don't know, interim final. That's, that's the, the guidance that they took feedback on through July 16th. And so they'll be finalizing that after they analyze all the guidance from all the municipalities, et cetera, on that. But in, in the interim, they called it interim final rule that has a lot of these details. And I looked at that today and actually it looks worse than it did a month ago. So I'm not sure they, they condensed it all into less pages, but it's harder to read now. So I'm not sure what, you know, how that's forward progress. But the information is out there and available if anyone wants to take a look at the details. But those main categories, I think are relatively self-explanatory. The use of lost revenue gets a little murkier, but as long as it's for the, for the provision of government services, you know, we can utilize those lost revenue dollars towards, you know, miscellaneous categories. So I went, I went through that quickly. Basically, you know, the, the big takeaways are, you know, we got half of it, half of the, the funds already. We're watching it closely, you know, to make sure we're in compliance. And at that, I'll, I'll turn it back over to council or City Manager for questions or comments or discussion. I can step, step back.
Sure. Okay. Well. All right, Councilmember Becker.
Hopefully a quick, easy one. I want to make sure I understood this just for flexibility of how it's used. When you said that it could be used for a budgeted line item. So if you have a million dollars budgeted on something that fits into the category that the money can be used for, you take a million of the relief and use that, can you then take the million that was budgeted and put it somewhere else, effectively giving you ultimate freedom?
That's the way I interpret it.
Okay. That's what I heard too.
I have a question, what I say, but you know, a full transparency, one of the ineligible uses is to set aside rainy day funds. But in fact, you know, if you can utilize dollars for your budget, you have freed up dollars for other uses.
Councilmember Matthew.
Yeah, I guess my question tags along with Nick's. You said that the, we could calculate a 4.1% increase off of the last calendar year not affected by COVID. Of, is that based off of the total budget or the, or would that be based off of our general fund budget?
So the last fiscal year, it's, it's kind of, it, it switches on, on the way the guidance works is you have to, your base year is your last full fiscal year prior to COVID. And then after that, you calculate your loss on calendar year so that everyone's reporting the same to the Treasury, so that they're getting the same set of worksheets from, from all municipalities. We reviewed the guidance and it said operating revenues, it kind of had some definitions excluding utilities. So we basically looked at all of our what are called operating funds. So the general fund, now we included golf, that's an enterprise fund, but it's not a utility. We included the arena. And, and, and that, so, so it's not just the general fund. So we, we took it across all those because obviously we had significant revenue reductions in the arena. You know, not necessarily reductions in net, but reductions in revenue.
Okay. So basically capital funds would be included in that as well. Well, no, you said operating, so that would not be a capital fund.
So we transfer revenues into the capital funds.
Okay. That was my, yeah, that was in terms of how we could use it and stuff. Nick's question was my number one question. So that's number two. So that, that does give us a significant amount of flexibility to fix things. So, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Bullard.
Yeah, I understand the questions that, you know, asked, and I understand how, that'd be great. You know, the federal government pays for this and then we take our money and, you know, use it for something else. But I read that 42-page thing and over and over again, they keep saying related to COVID, related to COVID. So how much flexibility? I mean, we're going to have to report and prove that the, the way the money is allocated truly fits what the, you know, the act is meant to serve.
The, the way we in finance interpreted it and some of the, the advisors is that when it comes to the relief category, specifically that has to be, you have to show impact from COVID. But the infrastructure, the water and sewer is just infrastructure. That's how we interpret it because unless it's revenue related, I'm not sure how COVID could impact, impact your infrastructure. So there's a lot of times there's not a connecting line through those categories from the way we're looking at it. But I, I even, I think on one of those slides in that corner up by the relief, I have must show COVID impact. So if you set up a grant program, and again, this goes to Councilmember Becker's question, and I'm cautious, I answer this, but, you know, I think the Treasury's real intent is that they want you utilizing the funds. They want you spending them. Okay. So if we use the dollars for a budgeted line item and then we use them somewhere else and we just don't save that, I think we, we would be in compliance. Our auditor said, it wasn't our auditors, one of our advisors said, keep it between the guardrails, you know, and, and, you know, there's, there's more flexibility in this act. So I'm sorry to ramble on about it.
Okay. So then the discussion here is about capital projects, not really setting up a grant program for helping businesses and, and individual households.
That's to your discretion. I mean, because grant programs for businesses have been affected by COVID, that could, a grant program could be set up related to these categories and the allowance.
But that would not necessarily affect any line item from the city. That would be kind of separate?
I'm not sure I follow you like, because we, we can, you can do economic relief. So we could, we could set up programs to businesses that were impacted by COVID. And, and, you know, we've taken in 6.7 million dollars in revenue. We'd have dollars expenditures going out, grant related expenditures to businesses related to a program. However, we design that, what qualifications, loss revenues, et cetera.
Okay. And do we actually have to put a written plan together to submit to the federal government before we start spending the money?
I, no, I have not seen any indication of having to get pre-authorization, but you have to do, you have to report after the fact.
And the last question is about administering the whole program. I remember with the CARES Act administration, we ended up having to hire another employee because it was pretty much overwhelming and we don't have Jennifer here anymore. So is there going to, going to be a need for hiring and is that going to be able to be covered by the federal funding?
Well, I, I guess I'll have a two-part answer to that. It depends on the direction council decides to go with the funds. So if it's, you know, I'll say a one and done, you know, you're going to throw, put the, put the dollars towards a couple of large capital projects. There's really minimal administration as far as tracking and reporting those dollars go to the Treasury. We'll handle that in finance, no problem. If there's a grant program that you want to have established for relief to citizens, residents or businesses, and there's, you know, qualifications and you have to be reviewing tax statements and that, that kind of thing. I, I, I guess I would say maybe, you know, that you, and then for your last question about, you know, can you include that cost in the plan? Yes.
Okay.
What I've seen, you can.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Montney.
Hi. Thank you, Scott. So with the discussion that we had previously, the, the locust Colton Fund, I understand that we've already committed that within the next nine years, we're going to do that work. So just at least that's my understanding. So if we were to consider accelerating that, front-loading that work and getting it done as quickly as possible, essentially kind of to Nick's point, we would be freeing up not only money that we would have been having to set aside over the next nine years, but likely elevating the value of that money over the next nine years by, you know, I'm sure over the time it would cost more to do the work than if we did it all at once. I just wanted to check my thinking with you on that.
Yeah. I mean, it would have the effect of especially specifically you'd save on debt service and things of that nature too. So I, I, I get your point. You're freeing up dollars in the future that would have been utilized for that. But, you know, to me, it's if, if we're, you know, let's say we allocate 5 million. I mean, 5 million now is different because of the time value of money.
Right. 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 I mean, so that's my point. I mean, if we know we are going to spend that money, I mean, we've committed, you know, with regard to our remediation plan or whatever naming convention is appropriate for the commitment to handle this EPA concern. So, and the, the secondary opportunity then would seem, it would very much simplify admin. This is a honorable use that would allow us though to have opportunities in the future as a result of this infusion of, of money to the community.
Thank you. And I had seen you, do you want to yield your time to her first?
Yes. Oh, yes.
Okay. 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 Councilmember Carrillo.
Great. Thank you. Yeah. One question, or I guess one, one thing for us to keep in mind, I would be really interested in, in seeing what we can do to set up a, a means of public input outside of the, you know, the meetings, whether that's a, a pretty simple survey. I know sometimes we kind of over complicate things and make them more cumbersome than they need to be. But I would be really interested in seeing how the community weighs in about how this money should be spent. I guess the other point that I wanted to make is that, though I, I can see why it's tempting for us to just tackle the projects that have to get done anyway. I do think, you know, there is something to be said about why equity is one of the pieces of this, of this plan, right? And that, that's that systemic racism and systemic inequities have made it so that the impacts of the pandemic have been, have been hardest for the communities that are always left out, right? And the same is true of flood events and the increasing events related to climate change on and on. And so I do think that I'm glad to see that that's a part of this and I, and I encourage us to keep that in the front of our mind. Like we're very rarely going to get money, you know, kind of fall out of the sky that is actually intended to help us address some of those inequities. And, you know, the West Side certainly has been a place that has not gotten its fair share over the years. And so I, I would like to see us keep that in mind as we talk about expenses.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward.
Yeah. Just briefly, I, I, I really like the idea of, of spending money in ways that can move things along, speed things up. And I want us to be really careful not to put, not to lose opportunities to spend money that then will not come again. And what I'm getting at is that if, if, for example, the money is already there for us to be able to spend for, for instance, the CSOs from, from a certain pot of money, and we're not able to spend that pot of money on any other project, I'd hate for us then to put the money, this money into that and then not be able to spend this money on another project, if that makes any sense. I'm having a hard time expressing that, but I, I just don't want us to lock ourselves into spending this, putting this money towards something that might be funded elsewhere, if those options exist. I don't know that they do, but I want us to be real careful about that.
Well, thank you. And I think that's something that we'll explore with staff at a later time, right? Councilmember Creby.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. So kind of to the point, I think that other woman Ward was making is I, I certainly see some benefit in, in accelerating some projects, right? But I, you know, and, but I don't want us to then forget about the money we were going to set aside anyway, right? And, and have that go to someplace else, or who knows where. I don't want us to, you know, use this, this money to do O'Neill Pool. You know, I mean, we should already have money set aside for that, right? So, so I wanted to make that point. Also, you know, there are deadlines for us to decide how to spend the money and, and when we have to spend it, right? But there are no deadlines on when we can start deciding how to spend it and spend it, correct? We could do it next week if we wanted.
That's right.
Okay. And so I really want to make sure that we, you know, put a process in place where we're getting as much public input as possible, that we are working with the county and the, and the town on maybe bigger ways we could, we could spend that money just as options, right? And, and, but make those decisions, not wait until the end to make those decisions, make those as quickly as we can, so we can start making changes in our community.
I didn't want to clarify one thing real quickly. If I interpreted what you're saying, just the, the sewer funds, like if we free up, like if we spend American Rescue Plan dollars for Locust Colton, sewer dollars will still be the sewer dollars.
Okay.
So sewer revenue, sewer revenue that never gets transferred over. So we could do additional sewer projects then in the future, so that those, those remain sewer dollars. That, that rate increase that went into effect in 2018, Kevin referred to, that's what assisted some of the, the more aggressive, or I don't know, however you want to say it, the, the, the plan being put in place helped fund these EPA loans and things of that nature. That was a pretty material increase. I think it was a 50% increase. Back then, the funds were not available to approach these kinds of projects back then. But sewer funds are sewer funds, water funds are water funds.
You still have your light up. Do you have another question? Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, okay. Councilmember Amy, last but not least.
What helps me is it, it's counterintuitive. It, when it's green, you think you can talk, but it's actually the opposite. It's red, you can talk. It's like it's hot. The mic is hot. Anyway. That helps me. I, I was going to, to bring up the community development block grants process because I do remember that there was a big part of that where community input was collected in terms of, of having some guidance ultimately and, and how those funds could be spent. So I agree that it would be good to get some indicator of, of public feedback. And back to the Locust Colton Project, the EPA is funding a percentage of that. Am I right about that? That it's, it's?
I mean, it's a loan.
It's a loan. It's a loan.
It's a very low interest rate loan from, what's the pool called?
Okay, thank you for that. I was trying to figure it out based on the, the information on the website. So that's, that's really helpful. And I'm, I'm just wondering too, what, what's the next step for us in general in, in terms of a process? How are we going to make this determination? And what, what do we need to do to provide input as representatives of our communities?
Really, tonight was just an update. There's not a lot of additional clarity, but wanted to have this piggyback off of the presentation that was just prior. Many of the suggestions that came from council and has come from council and past conversations, those will be implemented when, when we have more clarity. We don't want to get out in front of something, ask somebody what their opinion is and then not be able to deliver that because it's disallowed. So more to come and we're gonna do these, you know, even if we don't have much more to add, we're gonna do these just to update the community.
Thank you. It looks like it's everybody. Thank you, Scott. You're off the cool seat. Okay, so next item on the agenda is a council initiative presented by Councilmember Matthew regarding a two-year trial program to send mental health crisis counselors out on emergency and on emergency calls in addition to police or firefighters, first responders. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, so this automatic initiative is just to start the ball rolling to say that I think that we should create a process and a program as, as a trial to exactly what it says, to send out mental health crisis counselors. Well, first we need to identify what types of calls we should send them on. And then partner with an organization in town, possibly PATH, possibly the fuse program or something of that nature with the goal of being to send out crisis counselors where appropriate, right? I think that in the past 30 years, the state of Illinois has consistently defunded mental health nonprofits and mental health hospitals that used to provide support structures. And as they did that, these problems got dumped onto three groups in particular. Teachers, firefighters and police officers. We didn't have any other way to deal with it. So we said those three organizations, the teachers caught the kids in school and the fire department and the police department ended up catching everybody else that needed services when they were in crisis. We've seen some programs around the United States in Oregon and in the Denver area that are starting to move towards this, this possibility of looking and seeing, are there types of calls we should send crisis counselors out as the first step with the hope of diffusing the situation and keeping people out of the emergency room, keeping people out of jails. And so my initiative was to use city staff and fire department and police department and, and the experts that we have already hired to start fleshing out this idea of what would this look like if we did this in the city? How would we implement this and create real trackable numbers so that we have educated numbers to make long-term informed decisions off of? Now, that being said, all this might be completely moot at this point because the General Assembly signed in, well, they, they passed a law called CESA that could actually take this off our plate by requiring we do this under state law anyway. I, Leslie reached out to me to ask if I still wanted to continue to move this forward. And I did because Governor Pritzker hasn't actually signed it yet. Or if he did, I missed it. I tried to find in the news if anybody knows. But I, I don't think he signed it yet. If he doesn't, we, we're gonna need, I think we should do something. If he does, we can't do this anyway, cause state law would supersede us. And I hope that made sense.
Okay, sounds good. So I should have said this in the beginning, but you, we basically have three options here. This is not up for major discussion, but we just want to, we have three options. One is to have the initiative placed in the future city council agenda for further consideration or action. Or number two would be to have staff evaluate and prepare an analysis on the proposed initiative and bring it back for further council discussion. Or number three is to deny the initiative being placed on a future agenda and, and or having staff, city staff evaluate and analyze a proposed initiative. So at this point, I guess I'm gonna leave it up to you, Jamie, to propose a motion and.
Well, and, and one of the things I wanted, I've gotten a bunch of questions on this from other council members. I'm sorry, I didn't get back to everybody and as well from the community. I, this is not the role that I'm an expert on. I am proposing that we use our staff and the experts we have hired to start building an idea and a framework out. So my ideal solution would be staff would prepare an analysis and start looking at this. I know that the Bloomington Fire Department has already been talking to PATH in the past about doing the same program, but PATH didn't have funding. And so in this, I actually propose one of the possible sources of funding could be the tax revenue coming in from legalized cannabis sales. Since we, there was a conversation we had that we wanted to make sure this did something positive for the community. And I think this is one of those possibilities.
Okay, so you're proposing number two then?
Yes.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Is there a second? Okay, second by Councilmember Ward. Would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Matt.
And I guess my question is whether the initiative, like the, the initial, the initial intent of the initiative can change based on the, the, the analysis that staff does and the discussion that happens on council. Especially if the act is signed in between then, could we then say, okay, well now we wanna use this model to explore you know, just something different or unique that goes above and beyond what the state is mandating.
I don't see why not.
Legally, that's cool.
Because we only know what we know now.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with, if it morphs, right? I mean, some of this is gonna be taken out of our hands potentially. If it morphs into something different, I am willing to talk about it.
Cool.
I think that it's, it is gonna take a little while for us to figure out. State is gonna have to figure out how to implement what they, what the General Assembly passed. And that could be a multi-year thing while they're trying to sort it out, but I'm okay with the idea personally.
Thank you. Awesome, thank you.
Is there any boundary to how much staff time we would be willing to invest in this as we vote on this? Just thinking about the fact that we do have this state legislation pending. And secondly, you know, I, you know, this, this would kind of take away opportunity cost toward other things that the staff may be currently facing if we don't kind of box it in to, you know, a high-level analysis or a directional analysis as opposed to a deep dive. I just wanted to make sure I understood how many resources I was committing to in a vote today, given the fact that I, I just know very little about this.
Sure. Isn't that stated in your initiative? How much time did you?
I put, I put significant because I think realistically to do this correctly is gonna take some time. In, in terms of, so I am okay, the, the governor has 60 days to either sign or veto what the General Assembly sent him. If we wanted to wait and see what happened, I'm, I'm willing to delay this to wait to see if he signs it or not. I, I'm fine with this. I just, like I said, I submitted this and then they passed it like three days after I sent it in to him. So I, I wasn't prepared for them to actually take action and move that fast. So I, I'm, I'm okay waiting and then we can have a conversation in the past. We have brought these back a second time with maybe a quick update to them. And we've had a little bit further council discussion and I'm fine with that idea. If that's what everybody would like to do.
Does that work? Okay, awesome.
So then just for clarity, are we going to pause and bring this one back later? Or do we wanna continue with the motion where staff would, how do I say, staff prepare an analysis and bring it back in the future?
I'll, I'll say pause and bring back later. If that means that we need to officially table it for now, I, I don't know, but pause and bring it back after the governor makes.
What's the difference between pause and?
Yeah, that's, that's George and I were kind of whispering here.
Right, what is the meaning of the word is?
Let's see if I can get this. You'd have to withdraw the initial motion and then make a motion to table this for either in general or for a date certain. You're probably better off maybe doing it for the next, the next committee as a whole and then see where we're at that point.
Yeah, I'll fine with that. I'll withdraw this and to be resubmitted for next committee of the whole, hoping we know something more from the governor.
What about the 60 days? Do you think, when was, when's the?
I think they sent it to him on June 1st or 2nd.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Oh, was it just the 28th? I thought it was sooner than that. How about pause until the governor makes a decision either way?
There you go, all right.
So that could either be the August Committee of the Whole or the September Committee of the Whole is potentially possible.
Councilmember Becker, this was supposed to be three minutes.
I know, but given, given that we have a lot on the agenda for August anyway, in the committee of the whole, I would say targeting September might just be to focus on Councilwoman Montney's opinion of, we got a lot to do. Can we just target September and make it easy?
I'm fine with that.
All right.
You need a second.
Oh, there you go, George.
Molly.
I'd just like to make the comment though, that if it's brought up again at the committee of the whole, even in August, we don't have to have a big long discussion about it. It's just giving staff direction. So it, it seems like if, if we have the possibility of moving forward, it would be nice to be able to do that as opposed to waiting yet another month. So.
I don't mean to also muddy the waters, but kind of to what Councilmember Ward is saying, often when these move forward, it's done with the flexibility that the city manager kind of directs what happens in that conversation and how it's fine-tuned for how it moves forward. So if that's helpful at all, you could also just decide that we could go with the previous motion that staff would prepare an analysis and bring it back, at which time the city manager and mayor would determine when that comes back. We were just saying, you did just withdraw it, but we haven't had the second actually agree to it either, so.
Is there a second to withdraw and then bring it back in August? Yeah, so you withdraw and agree to bring it back in August, right?
I would be happy to have it brought back in August.
I'm fine with, however, I, I just want us to have the conversation to start this conversation happening. I know we do have a lot going on in August, but it doesn't have to be an in-depth conversation in August.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. So August, let's just do August.
Okay, now I'm read. Councilmember Matthew.
Yep.
Councilmember Volin.
No.
Councilmember Montney.
Just to clarify, this is just to postpone, so the, essentially the motion is withdrawn?
Yes, and to bring it back in August.
To this committee of the whole.
Yes, yes, to bring it back in August. But again, in August, it shouldn't be a, a long drawn-out discussion either. You know, it's just to, three minutes if we wanna move forward. So he'll bring it back.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ime.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Korea. Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
If I could just announce, we did have one nay and now it's Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes, thank you. So next item on the agenda is the city manager's discussion. City manager Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll make this very short. Just wanted to share that the special bulk waste pickup will be completed, estimates are with overtime, that it will be completed on Wednesday. And I forgot about my slide. There we go. Let me shift and go to the new employees. So we have Robert Washington that started with Public Works. Susan Hy with BCPA. Do not recognize this last person. Catherine Murphy, our communications manager. Talk about being thrown right, right into it. She has. She's done an excellent job. Next slide, please. Dog Days, that's our first Friday. That's coming up, not this Friday, but the following. And then the downtown farmer's market, it's been extremely successful. And that's every Saturday morning, 7:30 to noon. And I think that was it for the slides. The special bulk waste pickup, we expect to complete this on Wednesday. We followed the same traditional map for the different zones and areas, picked it up in the same order as we do on any other given bulk waste pickup. But the comment that was made earlier, I was going to share that we know that there is still a fair amount of flood damage type of debris. And we're finalizing what we will communicate to the community on how we will pick that up. Is it gonna be another full-blown special bulk waste pickup? Or is it gonna be these one-offs as we are notified to come out and pick those up? And again, you know, we would ask the community not to mix, you know, stuff that's obviously not the flood damage. This, this really is about taking care of the storm victims. And then also just communicating to everyone, so what gives, you know, as far as public works and what they're doing, you know, all hands on deck with the special bulk waste pickup. So what are they not doing? And what they are not doing is the alley maintenance, the mowing that we're responsible for, that also includes the state routes because we do that for IDOT. So if you see a little bit taller weeds or things that are unkept and they're typically maintained to a high degree in this community, that's what's given in, in this storm event. And I think that's it. Or real quick, I'm sorry. I wanted to say thank you to the staff that were represented at the MARK, the Multi-Agency Resource Center. This is something, again, under the emergency authority at the county level, they stood this up. It was a great resource for our community. And it's one of those opportunities that even if we don't have all the answers, it's an opportunity to listen. And we were extremely well represented by staff. And I know some of the elected officials were there as well, and this was for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do not have an executive session, so at this point I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, move by Councilmember Bowlin and second by Councilmember Ime. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay. Have a good one, have a great week.